Welcome to tonight's council meeting of Tuesday, October the first. Welcome to October. Interesting weather times. First order of business is a performance of "O Canada." And I understand...
Our anthem singer is delayed.
Our anthem singer is delayed.
We do have a video of...
Is she coming still?
She's trying to make it.
She's trying to make it. Okay. Okay. So councillor Strange is going to sing. Councillor Strange is going to sing "O Canada." If we could all join him and he will lead us. So we do have a video of "O Canada." So I guess we're going to kind of do this and you can hum to yourself if you like. You can be seated, please. Okay, the first order of business for tonight's council meeting is the adoption of the minutes from our last meeting of September the 10th. Motion by councillor Strange, seconded by councillor Dubrowski. Any discussions about the minutes? Seeing none? All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved. Thank you. Item four, for those following along on the agenda, disclosures of a pecuniary interest. Councillor LaCoco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Check 429831 payable to myself, August 14, 2019, $340. Check 430082 payable to myself, August 21, 2019, $11776. Check 430357 payable to myself, August 28, 2019, $52665. Check 430791 payable to myself, September 11, 2019, $260.34. They're all for reimbursement of expenses and AMO expenses for the conference. And then check 430388 for the Niagara Falls Art Gallery, August 28, 2019, for $2,333.34. I sit on the board as a resident. And check 430408, project share, August 28, 2019, for $24,866.66. I sit on the board as a resident. They've all been forwarded to the clerk.
Thank you very much. Those are a few checks.
Yeah.
Councillor Strange?
Check number 429894 and check 430654 payable to myself from the AMO conference.
Thank you. Any other disclosures? Councillor Peterangelo?
Thanks, Your Worship. I have one to my employer, Negacatig, this is the board, 00233-0003. And I'll give that to the clerk.
Thank you. Any other disclosures? Okay, and myself, I have a check number 429777. Check to myself as well, and I will give this to the clerk as well. Okay, moving along to everyone's favorite part of the meeting is the mayor's reports and announcements. First off, on a sad note, Maria Baldonelli, the mother of Louis Baldonelli of our building department, passed away, as did Stan Sokka, father of Stan Sokka in the fire services department, as one of our captains. Thank you to all who came out to celebrate councillor Thompson's 80th birthday. It was just a birthday that never ended. It wasn't a birthday, it was more of a birth week, as we celebrated the longest-serving mayor in the city's history and someone who's been around for a long, long time in the city. And we'd like to congratulate again councillor Thompson, who is also honored as the very first inaugural recipient of the Niagara Falls Tourism Wall of Fame that took place this week at the Scotia Bay Convention Center. And I know a number of us were all thrilled to see, and it was interesting as he tried to break that bottle of champagne on the new building, and of course, he chipped the building. So we said Wayne Thompson definitely left his mark on City Hall. So, well done Wayne. And Wayne, as well, on behalf of the city council, I know we've given him a whole bunch of neat things, like how many people get a building named after them, right? But that just wasn't clear enough. So what we did was, we, I'm trying to get you up here Wayne, we chronicled all the pictures from the event where we did the building, and we put them into a photo album, and we thought this would be a good opportunity so he can always remember that special day that he had with the city. So happy birthday Wayne.
Well, this was a very interesting week. All his fault. I crossed my mind many times, I thought, why is he doing it? They only do this when you're on your way out. And he's trying to tell me a story. I don't know. Anyway, it was beautiful. The one outside here at the building, we had such a great crowd, and it was really impressive to me, because most of the people that I had direct contact with, that I helped out through all of the, over the years, they all came out and I haven't seen some of them for years, but it was so impressive to see that. And I thank the council, and particularly Jim, he was the one that organized all of this, and Carrie Campbell, she was the one, his assistant. Anyway, thank you very much.
Moving along, we had the Niagara Falls Prayer Luncheon this past Friday. We welcomed our guest speaker, basketball Hall of Famer and co-founder of the NBA's Orlando Magic, Pat Williams. Pat is known as one of the top 50 most influential people in NBA history. He's also got a championship. So we were lucky to have him. Congratulations to all the organizers for a full house. We had the Line of Duty Death Memorial Ceremony for our firefighters this past week, and I was joined by councillor Thompson, including one of the people that we added to the memorial, unfortunately, but to acknowledge him respectfully, the uncle of our chief, Jim Bootleer's uncle was also added to the list on Sunday. Today was an exciting announcement. Hockey Canada Foundation was in Niagara Falls at the casino. We met at R5 and they made the major announcement that the Hockey Canada Major Fundraiser will be in Niagara Falls next June. This year it was in Edmonton. Typically, they do their major fundraiser in a city that has an NHL team. Of course, we don't have an NHL team, but we're thrilled to be able to host, because Niagara Falls is known for being able to host major events. This will be a major fundraising event that will take place in the city. This typically is an event that, as I say, happens in major cities with teams. The beauty about it is it leaves a legacy. Fifty percent of the funds that are raised stay in the community that'll help minor hockey. And this group, they specifically want to leave their mark on girls' hockey in Niagara Falls, which would be a real neat legacy to leave behind when they leave the city. So there'll be a lot of NHL celebrities past and present in Niagara Falls next June. So you'll want to watch for this major event. Council representation, I'd like to thank councillor Kerrio for representing the city at the ribbon cutting at Silvergate Homes Legends on the Green. Councillor Thompson representing the city at the Terry Fox Run. Councillor Dubrowski representing the city at Palfinger's 30th Anniversary Celebration and the 49th Annual Reunion of the National Association of Van Valkenburg Families opening ceremonies. To councillor Strange representing the city at the PetSmart September Adoption Weekend. And I have to apologize, this hasn't happened before, my phone's ringing. And please turn your ringers off if you have your phones here today. Okay, give me one second here, folks. That was a little embarrassing. Yeah, councillor Strange at the PetSmart September Adoption Weekend. Did they adopt you? Did they at the event?
No, they wouldn't take me.
They wouldn't take you, okay? And councillor Campbell, who's not here tonight, representing the city at the grand reopening of the Niagara Scouting Museum. And I'd like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving in advance. Our next council meeting will be Tuesday, October the 22nd. So we move on to item six of our agenda, where we have appointments and presentations. So our first presentation tonight, Kristen French Child Advocacy Center. I understand we've got Janet Handy, the executive director, who's here to present to us. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do I put this on here? Here we go. There we go. It works. Mr. Mayor, thank you, and council members, for giving me a few moments of your time to bring you up to date on the work of the Kristen French Child Advocacy Center Niagara. We are a regional service, so we like to reach out throughout the region and let people know what we're up to in the last 10 years, which is our anniversary this year. We are a safe place for children to disclose their abuse experience to police and child welfare investigation teams in a child-friendly and welcoming center. We are the first fully operational child advocacy center in Ontario since 2008, and now we are one of 32 established or in development CACs across Canada. More than half of those centers are in Ontario. This is an international model of excellence and joint investigation for children and youth who have experienced child abuse, and has been endorsed as the model of choice for interviewing children by the Ontario Association of Chiefs of Police. We aptly renamed the center from the Child Advocacy Center Niagara to the Kristen French Child Advocacy Center Niagara in 2014. And center partners, staff, board, and volunteers, we all work tirelessly to sustain the center in our efforts to keep our doors open. Our purpose is to provide this non-threatening, child-friendly place where children do feel safe. There are no uniforms, everyone is in dress, a business casual dress. There's no indication that it's a police station, it's not a hospital, it's not a principal's office, it's no place where children might otherwise be disclosing abuse. It is their place, their team, and it's made especially for them. The joint investigation model minimizes the number of times that children must repeat their experience. In the best of all worlds, the recorded interview goes forward into the justice system, so children don't have to be interviewed over and over again. And we provide the coordinated partner's response, and that whole process significantly reduces the trauma that's associated with disclosing abuse. We work together as a team. Police, Niagara Regional Police Services gather evidence and they determine criminal charges. Family and Children Services Niagara determines child protection needs and assigns special support staff to families during and after the investigation. Family Counseling Center, our third partner, does follow-up counseling support, and all partners may call in medical support to assess children's needs. We do have a medical room there, and they can do that at their discretion. And we host investigators, we greet families, we direct incoming calls. This coordination ensures that the developmental and victim needs of Niagara's children and youth are considered first when they're encountering the justice system meant to support them and not increase their trauma. Some of the larger centers across the country have now been able to do return on investment research, and so a number of things have been found that children and families, children report feeling less scared, caregivers are more satisfied with the procedure and the investigation, and CACs refer more children for both mental health services and preventative and injury-related medical exams than any other system of joint investigation. The benefits for professionals and community is that when working as investigation teams, professionals better understand each other's team roles. It improves their results through case review together, and fewer children fall through the cracks. And there is an estimated savings of 32% when an investigation is done jointly in a CAC than a non-CAC investigation where partners are still working in silos. Since opening in 2008, we've seen more than 3,000 children and youth at the center. We've grown from hosting 50 in our first year to, on average, 340. Last year, we had 312 cases involving 519 children and youth. Children come from every municipality in Niagara region for investigation support, which means that there's no one region that experiences, that does not experience child abuse impacts in our young victims. Underreporting or undertreated child abuse can affect a person for a lifetime. We now know that a child who suffers abuse is 30% less likely to graduate from high school. We know that a youth who suffers abuse is 26 times more likely to be homeless, and an adult survivor of childhood abuse is two times as likely to be arrested. We do consider this a preventative model, so even though something has happened, we feel that if we intervene at this early stage, we have a better chance of changing the trajectory of a child's life. Our strategic plan calls for collaboration on a number of levels. We do outreach to youth, creative arts programs with Foster Festival. We've done inter-agency and community learning with Niagara Chapter Native Women's and Victim Services Niagara. And we provide outreach in schools through Teen Connect. And of course, there's the collaboration of our police services and child welfare. We also began a collaborative website called PCAN, which is Partners to End Child Abuse in Niagara. And that's 14 different agencies who have come together and developed a database website where anyone can go, professional, non-professional, like, and find a speaker, find events, find information, statistics, to help you understand the subject matter more, or bring a speaker into your groups. I've talked about the youth programming already, but the Teen Creative, particularly interesting. We've just started a second group of creative arts programs for kids nine to 11. And these have been extremely successful. In our Teen Creative right now, we have 14 kids, and in our Cathies Kids, we have 10. We have no core funding from the government. This is a constant pursuit of ours. Our funding sources are based on tireless fundraising by volunteers, staff, and partner support. And we receive and raise funds from three areas: events, campaigns, and planned giving; partner support, Niagara Regional Police Services and FACS; and grants, foundations, and service clubs. So we're always writing grants, we're always holding events, and we're always seeking funds. Finally, most importantly, and we end all our presentations with this, that no matter who you are, it takes all of us to be vigilant. If you know of abuse or suspect a child is being abused, please report it. You do not have to determine if it is abuse. You just need to make the call and let the professionals make the determination. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do I have any questions for Jen? Any questions or comments of council? Seeing none, looking for a motion to receive the presentation, moved by councillor Kerrio, seconded by councillor Dubrowski. All those in favor? Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Mr. Mayor, I've left some items here, if anybody would like to pick one up and take a look at the annual report.
That's great. Thank you very much. Thank you. Maybe we can pass that up to our clerk, and we'll have that for council, anyone in council that wants it. Okay, next item is 6.2, Community Crew. Sarah Pertula, Community Crew Director, and Grant MacArthur are going to make a presentation to council. Welcome.
Thank you. I never thought that one small interaction could change your life. The young boy actually grabbed the back of my shirt, and when I turned around, he was smiling at me from ear to ear. And I said to him, "Hey buddy, how are you?" And he said, "This is the best day ever." And I said to him, "How come?" And he told me two things. He said, "One, because I got a yogurt drink for breakfast, and two, because you brought me a lunch today." Good evening, Mayor Diodati, members of council. My name's Sarah Pertula, and I'm the executive director of Community Crew. I brought along our board member, Grant MacArthur. The reason for our visit is to provide you with an update on the work we do in Niagara Falls and throughout the region. At Community Crew, our mandate is to provide food for kids. Our core program works throughout Niagara Falls and the region, providing lunches to those children who might otherwise go without. We feed approximately 700 children through 10 schools once a week. We work in St. Catherine's, Niagara Falls, and in Welland. And we have just really started to scratch the surface. So our goal for the 2019-2020 school year is to be able to feed 1,600 children across 18 schools.
Amber alert. Everybody, if you can just okay on your phones, because it won't stop until you do it. Thank you, sir, for that.
No worries. Across 18 schools and include the cities of Port Colborne, Fort Erie, and Thorold. In Niagara Falls, we actually work just around the corner at Simcoe Street School and St. Patrick's School, where the low-income measure for families is about 50%. And what that means to you is that 50% of the families bring home approximately $36,000 a year for a family of four. And in Niagara Falls, that means about 3,800 children should be accessing our program.
I think we're good now.
We're good. In November, we're going to expand this program into Hexhamer Public School and into James Morden Public School. So our organization is volunteer-driven. We have two staff members, and we have 100 volunteers. And each week, our volunteers prepare, deliver, and hand out the lunches to the children. They also write notes to them that include letters of encouragement. So they'll say things like, "Someone's thinking of you," "We think you're pretty awesome," and "You were born to do great things." So today, we invite you to join us as we look towards the future. We invite you to get involved in the work we're doing in Niagara Falls and throughout the region. And I'm going to turn it over to Grant, my colleague.
Thank you very much, Sarah. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councillors. Thank you for allowing us to be here. And I'll speak slowly, because I'm from Niagara, so you can hear my accent is local. My job with Sarah is to see the background, how we can move things forward without always asking for a handout, just like we do with our children. I'm lucky, I've been volunteering for years with this program, and I've been going through to the schools and working with the children. And it's not about giving them something, but actually, when we leave, we get something. And my ask today is that you would take into consideration, working with us is something different. We're not trying to divide the pizza that every charity is asking to divide. We are actually asking to work with us, and we are looking for the lasagna. So we're not touching anyone's pool, we don't want to go into that. But what we do is, we've just been very successful in doing a project in Welland, where we've got three schools, and we've managed to do a build. We built a townhouse, we sold the townhouse, and with the city, we've managed to build and take some funding to help us feed the kids in that area. We want to do the same thing in Niagara Falls as a partnership, and we want to move forward with ideas. We're not coming only to ask for you to give us something, but we want to be part of growing this. And I'll just ask you to take away with you, the opportunities that we leave behind are the opportunities of helping and being part of something. And we've been fortunate enough to be part of something that we are loving to grow, and we want to carry on growing throughout the Niagara region. And we want to come into Niagara Falls and be partners with you. Thank you, Wayne Thompson.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions of council? Yes, councillor Dubrowski?
Just a comment through the mayor.
Sarah Grant, thanks so much for your presentation. Community Crew's such an amazing organization. I had the pleasure of working with Sarah over the past couple of months on their Super Kids Day, which took place, was it last week or two weeks ago?
Two weeks ago.
At its part, but there was over 100 children that took part, and it was really about kids helping kids. So I think what you guys are doing is great, and I'd be happy to make a motion, maybe to have our staff work with Community Crew to kind of research the ideas where you're working with Welland and the city of St. Catherine's, to see if maybe it makes sense for our council and our staff to do the same here in Niagara Falls. Thank you for coming. Keep up the great work, and thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we've got a motion by councillor Dubrowski, seconded by councillor Strange. A question by councillor Kerrio.
Quick question. Great presentation, and it's about something that I was really well aware about. During the, there's nowhere that people will contact you on the, what we just saw, numbers or contacts or emails, or if people want to get involved, I didn't see a number or anything. So maybe give a little...
Sure, sure.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. So you can go to communitycrew.ca. We're also on all four social media channels, so Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, and LinkedIn. But communitycrew.ca is the best place to reach us, and our phone and web forms are there.
So communitycrew.ca.
Correct.
Okay, so hopefully the COJCO can run that across the screen.
So can we get some emails to not?
What?
Can we get some emails to not?
Maybe, maybe. Yes, councillor Strange?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I congratulate you guys, you guys did a great job.
Thank you.
You know, you can't imagine a child going to school and they're not fed, and we're helping some of these low-income families at certain schools in Niagara Falls, but all over Niagara region. I can't imagine a kid going to school on an empty stomach and having to learn and go inside and play and not have any calories or any kind of nutrition in them. So, thank you for doing this, it's an amazing, amazing project.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
That's great. Well, looking for a motion, so we've got a motion by councillor Dubrowski, seconded by councillor Strange, that we both receive and asked to come back with a, staff to come back with a report on what's being done in other communities and how we might participate as well. Okay, we'll call that vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Thank you. Okay, next up, we've got the Steve Ludzik Celebrity Roast, and we've got Tim Hauser here. Tim, there he is, director of the foundation, to address us about the big roast, October 18th.
So the, thanks, Mayor Diodati, and...
So the, thanks, Mayor Diodati and council, for allowing me the opportunity to come here and request that. I guess the ask is pretty simple, to see if council would like to maybe take some discretionary income that they have with their budget, and either purchase individual tickets or purchase a table for the roast. This is our eighth one. This year, we're actually roasting Steve himself. Not very often do we get Don Cherry to come to things, but he's coming to this one. He has a special bond with Steve. And all of the money that we raised goes to the Shaver Hospital, so this is our eighth year. When we first started the clinic at Shaver Hospital, it would take about two years, two to three years, for somebody to be able to get into the clinic. That timeframe's down only a couple of weeks. So we've raised well over $1 million private funds over the last seven years, and we continue to commit to bringing money for that organization there. So people go through a stage, if they have Parkinson's, is anybody in the peninsula can go there. It's free of charge to them, they don't pay anything. They go through an eight-week program. Steve usually meets them at the beginning to, when the program comes, and he's always there at the end of the program, after the eight weeks. And most people will tell you that they got their life back, so if they have a spouse or a partner who's got Parkinson's, it kind of gives them the ability to get back in society, get back to working at home, the mobility, they go through a whole variety of things. So my ask is pretty simple, I would ask that council maybe have a motion to say if they would like to get a table for the event for that night. It's Friday night, October the 18th, it's only a couple of weeks, three weeks away, two weeks this coming Friday. It's at Club Italia this year. We've downsized a little bit, we'd like to sell it out. And anybody who's seeing this in TV land out there that wants to obviously get tickets, there's a contact on there to contact Maureen Thun directly on email, and they can purchase their tickets over the phone or on an email with Maureen, and then get your seat reserved. So it'll be a tremendous event. It has been for the last seven years, and I don't expect anything less this year.
So someone wants to buy tickets, is, so the best way is to email Maureen?
Yes. The best way is to get in contact, Maureen Thun, directly on the email that's on that flyer there.
So for those at home that maybe can't see that, so it's maureen.stevens, Steve, S-T-E-V-E, Ludzik, L-U-D-Z-I-K, foundation@gmail.com.
Yes.
So maureen.steves.
Steve Ludzik Foundation@gmail.com.
At gmail.com, for anyone at home. Counsel Strange.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Wierd. Thank you, Tim, for coming.
You're welcome. It was good to see you two guys today, doing lunch.
Yeah, just, you know, if anyone knows Steve, he's such a happy-go-lucky guy, and Hall of Famer hockey player, but on the ice, off the ice, he is an icon for what he's doing for Parkinson's, and for all these celebrity roasts and the money that you made for helping people with Parkinson's. I know we have a new policy, is what, how much we can spend, or if we can spend a whole table. I know every councillor gets a certain amount that they can spend, but I would like to make a motion that we each buy a ticket. If I don't have enough money, Wayne Campbell or Karen, I know his pot, ticket. But anyways, I'd like to make the motion that we each buy a ticket for this great event.
So a motion that each of us have the option, right, to?
Individual ticket, it's $200 a table, a table is $2,000.
Right, so it's $200.
It's $200 a ticket. The numbers still work the same.
Me and you can just buy one from all of us.
And you can bring your spouse, too, so that's the whole idea. It is an event that you can bring your spouse, it's not just for guys only, we do, probably half the room is filled with women at the event.
For sure it is. Counsel Dubrowski.
He's coming there just to see you.
Counsel Dubrowski.
Through the mayor. Thanks for that presentation.
No problem.
If I'm not able to make the event, but if we wanted to make a donation, like a personal donation, can we still do that through the website?
Yes, right through Maureen. Yeah, and to the website, yeah, so it'll get directly to Maureen. And all of that money goes to Shaver Hospital for the Parkinson's Foundation.
Okay, cool.
Absolutely.
Okay, so we have a motion by Counsel Strange, that councillors be allowed to purchase individual, or be offered an opportunity to purchase individual tickets. Do you have a second for that motion? Counsel Cariel, any discussions to the motion? We'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved, so we'll all start getting our money together.
Good, and we'll see you on the 18th.
I'll be there.
And just in case you didn't remember, the date for next year for the gala for the Hockey Canada is June 15th and June 16th.
Oh, yeah, thank you for that. And also, I should have mentioned that earlier, I'll get the camera up here, for the, all this hockey stuff here today, we presented a city of Niagara Falls jersey for Hockey Canada, and I spoke earlier about the major fundraiser for Hockey Canada, and these are the jerseys that they gave to me to give to the city. So I appreciate that for next year, June 15th and 16th. But this year, August the 18th, October the 18th.
October 18th.
At Club Italia for the fundraiser for Parkinson's. And this year, we're going to roast Steve Ludzik.
Yes.
So this will be a great opportunity to roast the roaster.
Yes, and thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity to be here to speak tonight.
All right, thanks very much, Tim.
Thanks.
Thank you. Did I call the vote? Yes, I did, right? Yes, I did. Okay, item 6.4, 5G presentation. We've got here Meg Sears, who will be presenting to city council, and we have two people?
I'm Meg Sears, and this is Frank Clegg.
Okay, welcome.
So we will, oh, I don't even have to do it. Thank you ever so much for this opportunity. We are here partly because we presented at the McBain Center yesterday, and there was a great deal of interest. Perhaps the people who were at the presentation last night could raise their hands, just to give you an idea of the interest amongst your citizens. I'm originally trained in chemical engineering and applied chemistry, and I've been working for a couple of decades in medical research and environmental health. Some of the people I've worked with and for are at the National Research Council, Canadian Human Rights Commission, the Alberta Energy Regulator, and the Evidence-Based Practice Center, which is a world-leading center in how you do methods for systematic analysis. Oh, this is probably the best thing here. There we go. So we're talking about 5G. 5G is more data faster, and how is that going to work? Well, we're still going to have all of the third generation and fourth generation of wireless technologies, and in addition, we will have, in addition to the large sites, we are going to have small cells that will be multiple cells per block, so it's a very intensive outlay. This is for the wireless aspect. Bigger, faster internet can actually be done better with fiber optic cable and wires, which are the safest, fastest, most secure, and resilient, and lowest energy option. So there are numerous concerns about wireless technologies, and Health Canada sets the guideline called Safety Code 6. And the threshold that they have for exposure to the radiation that's used to transmit information using wireless technologies is based on what turns out to be a rather faulty premise, is that since it's microwave radiation, as long as it doesn't heat the tissue too much, then there's going to be no harm. But in fact, that does not protect health. So there are human and environmental health concerns for both the fauna and the flora, and indeed, actually, for the web of life, and there's huge amounts of information. So we're going to touch on just a few tiny tidbits of what we did last night, which was a few tiny tidbits of the totality. First of all, this kind of radiation disrupts chemical reactions. It speeds up some chemical reactions more than others, so that in the finely tuned biochemistry engine of your body, it's like having some cylinders firing at different times, they're supposed to be in sync. It disrupts the membranes. We have membranes around our cell nucleus, around the cells, and around our brain to protect our brain. When these membranes are disrupted, then chemicals can go through inappropriately, and these membranes are also like the factory floor for this factory of metabolism and synthesis. So we are disrupting the basic biology with this kind of radiation, and the results are numerous: cancer, birth defects, developmental problems in children, various types of dysfunction and chronic disease. This is one example that was given by Dr. Havas, who else is unable to join us this evening, but was presenting last night. This is live red blood cells, and on the left, you see normally, normal-looking cells when she was in a clean environment after exposure to Wi-Fi for 10 minutes. The membranes of the cells were damaged, and they were sticky. So the red blood cells were sticking together, it's called rouleau formation. This makes the blood very thick. It leads to clots, to heart attacks, to strokes, which are actually increasing in younger and younger Canadians. And it also occurs in some people who are electro-hypersensitive. We're concerned, obviously, I chair Prevent Cancer Now, I'm very concerned about cancer. Back in 2011, the International Agency for Research on Cancer, which is part of the World Health Organization, convened a panel that met for eight days, and they concluded that at that time, based upon the evidence, which was primarily human evidence, that this radiation from cell phones, et cetera, possibly caused cancer. So that's a Class 2B carcinogen. And they identified that there was, we were lacking animal information in order to upgrade that classification. So since, and this is now pending review, and since 2011, we've had some reports, this very large, complicated research program, so we don't have complete reports, but we have some of the reports from a study by the National Toxicology Program, looking at rats and mice, and this aimed to emulate the type of exposures from using cell phones. So it was a relatively higher exposure, but it was comparable to what people would have. And then the Ramazini Institute in Italy, they did a very large study using almost 2,500 rats, and their study emulated what we would be exposed to from cell towers. So this is a lower exposure. And interestingly, in both of these cases, we found the same kinds of tumors that were reported in the human studies, which are glioma, and are also tumor along the outside of nerves. So in humans, we see that tumor on the auditory nerve, and in the animals, we were seeing that same kind of tumor in the hearts. So this correlation between, in terms of the types of tumors, is very strong evidence. We've also had more human evidence, including Canadian data showing increased incidence of gliomas in Canadian adolescents and young adults with cellphone, increased, higher use of cell phones. And we have some more animal data showing that this kind of radiation actually potentiates, it makes stronger the effects of known carcinogens, and in a very large replicated animal study, it increased incidence, again, of two kinds of tumors in the brain and liver and leukemia. Finally, one other very obvious concern is male fertility. We think, we know from a lot of studies that cellphone radiation impairs the, it can damage DNA, and it impairs sperm. Male fertility has been falling, it's quite well-known, in Canada and globally, both. And so these are two graphs from one study, there are several of them, showing this rapid decline, both in concentration of sperm and in the total count. There are other major health effects. There was a large symposium at Women's College Hospital this spring. Some of the other symptoms that are found to be highly correlated with, and that go away when the exposure is reduced, include tinnitus, or ringing in the ear, many neurological symptoms, cardiac problems, and again, heart attacks, gastrointestinal problems, and skin problems, and quite a few more. So you don't need to just take my word for it, there's 250 other scientists around the world, from 42 nations, who are saying basically the same kind of thing. Amongst these scientists who are appealing to the United Nations formally to call for protection from this kind of radiation, they have amongst some 2,000, over 2,000 peer-reviewed studies on this topic. So I'm going to turn it over now to Frank Clegg.
Thanks, Dr. Sears. Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you for the opportunity to present this afternoon. My name is Frank Clegg. I have had the opportunity to spend my entire career in the technology sector. The last role that I had was the President of Microsoft Canada. So as you can imagine, I've seen the tremendous benefits technology can provide. I've also seen the harm if technology is not implemented correctly. In my opinion, after five years of dealing with experts around the world, I believe our implementation of wireless technology is frankly not safe. I started Canadians for Safe Technology five years ago. It's completely nonprofit, volunteer-based organization across Canada to raise awareness about the potential harm and how to use wireless devices safely. And also, we spend our time working and trying to advocate to all three levels of government in Canada. I joined the Business Advisory Group of Environmental Health Trust for the similar reasons, to try to raise awareness around the world with that organization. Dr. Sears mentioned Safety Code 6. I fight to say Health Canada owns Safety Code 6, they set the guidelines. Industry Canada, or ISID now that it's called, manages and monitors the guidelines. For lack of time, I don't have time to get into the details. I want to point out, though, that Health Canada's track record is not very good when it comes to some key impacts on human health in Canada. I've given you just a snapshot of some of the, some of the concerns that we have, and some of the, in each of these situations, it's taken Health Canada, in some cases, decades after this peer-reviewed science has been published, to actually catch up and make recommendations to save human health. I've chosen a quote about BPA. This is on the Government of Canada's website, I checked it this morning to make sure it's still there, and I think there's not a grandparent, or a mom, or a dad, who would give their child a BPA bottle. But according to Health Canada, it's concluded that the current dietary exposure to BPA through food processing, through packaging uses, is not expected to pose a health risk to the general population, including newborns and infants. The reason why we're particularly concerned about 5G is Cisco predicts that there will be a half a trillion devices by 2030. If you take down that number of humans on the earth, that works out to be just under 60 devices for every man, woman, and child in the world. Of course, countries like Canada, we will have higher than our share of that average. Very briefly, my industry strategy is, if you notice, there is no place you will find anybody from my industry saying wireless technology is safe. What they will say clearly is, we meet federal guidelines, in other words, Safety Code 6, if the devices are used correctly. They will, we bury warnings inside the labels. If any of you've looked, you can have to go through five layers of your iPhone to see, a very small warning that says, "Keep the device away from your head," and it tells you how long, or how far that should be, anywhere from a half an inch to some devices to be an inch. Baby monitors, now that I'm a grandparent, I'm spending more time with baby monitors, eight inches away from the child to meet the guidelines that we believe are not, are not safe enough. They insist that there's no established health effects, contrary to hundreds of scientists presenting peer-reviewed published papers. The EMF scientists group have themselves have published 2,000 papers showing harm from wireless radiation. The key strategy of my industry is to really bung up the process, whether it's the scientific review process in government, or the legislative process, to make sure that nothing gets done. Of course, no action means they can continue, we can continue to roll out the technology and use it, and encourage people to continue to take advantage and use the technology. Finally, the strategy is to continue, we're in this current process that I find fascinating, that my industry introduces the technology, and then others are responsible to make sure that they monitor it to see if there's any harm, and then deal with the consequences of the harm. And we all know about the rising health effects that we're dealing with, the provincial and federal level, while we as the taxpayers are paying for that, while my industry is continuing to make significant amounts of profits. Very briefly, I find it fascinating that China and Russia have guidelines that are 100 times safer than ours in Canada. Countries like Belgium, it's illegal to market cellphone to children under 14 years of age. France has been very aggressive on protecting children in schools, and also banning what marketing can be done around cell phones in the country. Taiwan, which is a part of, a big part of their GDP, is tied to the semiconductor industry, which feeds the technology industry, are very aggressive about protecting children under two years of age, where there's a complete ban, and parents can actually be thrown in jail if they're not protecting their children from tablets and cell phones. So what's happening in other actions around the world? Oregon has passed legislating, these are specific acts of legislation, similarly to the previous slide, those are acts of legislation that made it all the way through the government process. They're asking for a review of peer-reviewed, independently funded scientific papers on exposure to. exposure to microwave radiation or RF radiation, with a deadline of January 2021 to come back and report to the legislature. I had the opportunity to get out to New Hampshire and present to the state legislators on the bill, Bill 522, which ended up being passed, made it through the Senate, and it's a commission to study the environmental and health effects of 5G technology. And in that case, they will, that commission won't be involved with industry representation, civilians, represented experts, there's a professor from McGill University, he's one of the experts that's on that panel. Deployment's been halted on 5G in 50 municipalities in Italy and in Brussels. Parliament has commissioned a study on 5G in Austria. And finally, Switzerland is monitoring radiation levels. So that all leads to, okay, so we're sitting here, we have federal authorities that are, my opinion, are slow to the switch, so what's realistic to ask you to do? I don't think it's realistic to ask you to do a lot today, except for one thing, and that's the first item, is to say, this is a very complicated topic, it's a very, very important topic to the region, there are financial benefits. I would argue that a lot of the financial benefits can be attained by using fiber, by not by blowing wireless out everywhere needlessly. So I would ask that the councillors take it upon themselves, and actually make a commitment tonight, to spend, invest time to educate. I will make the commitment, on behalf of my peers, that if you do make that promise, and I can bring in experts such as Dr. Sears, Dr. Havas, these are people who are world-renowned, in Dr. Havas's case, she has presented over 100 times in over 30 countries around the world. Dr. Sears, she gave you the list of employers and companies who pay her to write position papers. It's those kinds of individuals that we would bring in to help educate you and bring you up to date on the topic. I would encourage you to write, run a public education campaign on how to use the technology safely, and what are the options to use it safely, so you have the best of both worlds. Clearly, the best way to use the technology is not, that's not realistic in today's world. We'd ask that you request a Niagara Regional Public Health Authority, in conjunction with Ontario Public Health, who are monitoring and reporting, and starting for the first time, to report on the exposure to and related health effects of RF radiation. I think it would be very powerful if council was to ask the local region to get involved in that process. I think that could be an amazingly strong statement. I would suggest, from a business standpoint, ask the providers about their proof of liability insurance against the harmful effects of RF radiation. We're led to believe that they're forced to self-insure, because the insurance company, Swiss Re, Lloyds of London, will not provide them insurance. So be it just a good indicator to you to say, look, if these are providers, what happens if something, God forbid, something drastic happens, who's going to end up holding the can at the end of the, at the end of the situation? The next to ask, again, not expecting tonight, but we'd like to plant the seat for them, unless you're so excited about what we've presented to you tonight, you want to go ahead, put up public, require public notice and consultation for all cellular antennas. Industry Canada, ISID, does require public notification for cell towers that are over 15 meters. They do not require notification for cell towers that could be on any kind of building or additions to cell towers. So a way to keep the public informed is to require and request public notification and consultation for all cell tower antenna. And finally, if you really want to start protecting citizens and feel very passionate, put a moratorium on the installation of small cell antenna on any property that Niagara Falls City owns. And I would say, not forever, but just until, part of our campaign in the federal election is to ask candidates who are running for government, federal election candidates, to help us update Safety Code Six. As we've talked about, the guidelines have not been updated significantly since the 1970s, when Safety Code Six first came out, and we believe they're sadly lacking in terms of protecting Canadians as adequately as they should be. That's what we have, thank you for your time and patience, and I appreciate the opportunity again for Dr. Sears and I to talk to you.
Thanks very much, Mr. Clegg and Ms. Sears, I appreciate you taking the time to present. We did give you an extra eight minutes just to help you to get.
I noticed that, thank you.
Yeah, we wanted to make sure you got it all in, especially in the interest of all the people that did come after last night's presentation. I will also point out that almost half of the council was at the meeting last night that you did, myself included, so we did get to hear the full 90 minutes of presentation that did take place. So now I open up to the council floor, I know councillor DeBroski had his hand up, and anyone else that wants to comment?
Through you, the mayor. Thanks for the presentation. I think throughout the years, we've had a number of groups and individuals come forward with opinions on, whether it be microwaves, cell phones, I remember in the 90s, everybody with the flip phone, there was a lot of health concerns that were talked about, but I still think, I've researched the subject up and down over the past week or two, I was at the presentation last night as well, but I still think we lack the scientific evidence that there's negative health concerns when it relates to microwaves, or cell phones, or even that we're talking about 5G. I did some more research where, there's a lot of cities and municipalities in the United States that have already rolled out and implemented the 5G technology, Chicago, Atlanta, Dallas, Houston, I believe it's Los Angeles, Phoenix, New York City, so I think more research obviously needs to be done. I'm happy to make a motion to receive the presentation, but I think technological advances definitely help to lead the job creation, job creation leads to a healthy and vibrant community, but either way, that's my two cents, and I'd love to hear what their fellow council members have to say as well.
Thank you for that councillor. Do we have other councillor, Peter Angelotti?
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship, appreciate the presentation by Ms. Sears and Mr. Clegg. I think, I mean, I've often said that we're only as good as the information that we get, and I appreciate the presentation being made tonight, but I personally would like to hear from Health Canada. I know that they're the overseer of this technology, so I'm not sure if it's possible to invite them here to this council, and whether or not they would accept an invitation to come and speak to us about it, but I think it'd be interesting to hear both sides, I mean, I'd like to, you know, make an informed decision.
Yes, councillor DeBroski?
Oh, yeah, I'll ask for a friendly amendment, if that's okay.
Yeah, fair enough. Okay, so let's go over the motion again, from the top, with the amendment?
Motion to receive the presentation and have staff contact.
Health Canada?
Health Canada, for presentation.
Okay, you've heard the motion, any other comments of councillor to the motion? Councillor LaCoco?
I was hoping we'd have a little bit more discussion before a motion came, so I was wondering if there were any other councillors that had any comments or questions, and I had a couple of questions, if that would be okay before the motion.
Yeah, well, before we call the vote, absolutely. Questions of the presenters?
Correct. Are there any other councillors that would like to make comments before I have questions?
Yeah, is there any other questions or comments of councillor at this point? Okay, it looks like the floor is yours councillor.
Thank you. Through the mayor, thank you so much for attending, and thank you for your presentation last night. I did have a couple of questions. Are there other concerns other than health for 5G? What are the other concerns?
Well, there's concerns such as security.
Oh, I thought you were going to talk about the floor. Sorry, we, okay, so, one of the biggest issues about wireless, there's a paper by Dr. Shockley out of the University of Colorado, and what he goes through extensive analysis and challenges the business case around wireless technology. And what his thesis is, that when you bring out a different generation like a 4G or 5G, you'll have to actually, in fact, add all new infrastructure. Whereas once you put a fiber optic system in, it's actually in, and it can run and carry and take more and more levels of technology. In addition, that fiber is 100 times faster than wireless, and always will be. So any technology that you see that develops in the wireless environment can automatically be applied in terms of compression or any of that, can automatically be applied to fiber. So fiber will always be at least 100 times faster. It's significantly more secure, because it's harder to hack into a wired system than it is a wireless system. It's a lot, in a power outage situation, when you're running a landlines and fiber, people are actually protected better, because they're not relying on cell towers that would actually rely on the power grid. There's a whole analysis on, they're more green in terms of using less energy, significantly less energy than a wireless system, and in terms of privacy concerns, one of the biggest concerns about 5G and the internet are things that is going to continue to drive, is that we will move from potentially billions of pieces of information to trillions of pieces of information, both corporate and private, which are also all immediately open to a completely, mainly unsecured wireless environment, whereas that's protected by a wired environment, you can protect that a lot better. So not only are there health concerns, but there's a significant amount of business concerns about the long-term impact of a wired, sorry, wireless, non-fiber-based system.
Okay, thank you. Through the mayor, my next question is, what can we do to protect ourselves and our family?
I think there's two things to remember. The one I'm particularly concerned about, and there is, councillor, with all due respect, I don't know what you would need more than hundreds of peer-reviewed published articles by scientists who don't get paid by industry, showing harm. And the area that I'm probably most concerned about, I mentioned before, being a new grandfather, are children. What we're learning about children is they're not little adults. Their skulls are thinner, so the radiation gets through more quickly. In addition to that, because their brains are more water soluble, the radiation is actually retained longer periods of time. So when you're in your home, you have the opportunity to do two things. The first thing you have to do is to keep, you protect, create like a cocoon of protection in your house. So if you have Wi-Fi and you can't afford to run wires to make it a wired system, go down to the local Canadian Tire store and buy a timer that you use for your holiday lights, and so that the routers turn it off. So every night when you and your children go to bed, your body's in a state of rest and repair. Second thing is, you have a cellphone, do not sleep, don't have it in the room with you. Get an alarm clock and use the cellphone, and leave it outside the room. Mobile phones are particularly sinful, because they are constantly emitting radiation, whether they're in the base station or not, whether you're using them or not, they're just constantly emitting radiation, and so, the base station's emitting radiation, and so are the remote stations as well. So if you have them in your house, I would seriously ask you to just throw them in the garbage. The other thing you can do, so that's in your home, so when you're in your home, and you're in a domicile, particularly with your children, their little bodies are repairing and rejuvenating machines. So the time they walk in the house, they are exposed to school, they are exposed at the Starbucks, or Tim's, or if they're younger, they're Toys R Us, when they're in your, inside your home, it make them, help them be very protected. The other thing you can do, you can take care of, is distance is your friend when it comes to using any device. The radiation is logarithmic. So in other words, if I double the distance for the phone from my head, it's, the radiation is a quarter. If I triple the distance, it's a ninth. So every move that you make, to keep that tablet off your lap, to keep that cellphone away from you, to keep yourself away from the router at work, or at school, or at home, that has significance and benefit. So protect your home, and keep, distance be your friend. Our website, c4st.org, the top of the homepage, there's a list of nine fundamental safety factors. Prevent Cancer Now, their website has a list of safety features on how to protect yourself and your family from wireless device radiation.
Through the mayor, I just have one more question, and then I'd like to add a friendly amendment to the motion. Could you explain the 5G and how close the poles would be, the antennas, and what that would do to the regular public?
The small cells are, that will be emitting these microwave, the millimeter waves, the very short waves, they, those, that kind of radiation does not travel as well through materials as the microwaves. So those are planned to be every few houses, so one city block would have more than one of these cells. And so the concern is that you can't escape this. You can have, you may have one of these cell phones, or cell towers, they're just small, little microcell, but they emit this radiation right outside your child's bedroom window. And so, a lot of people are saying, well, at a distance, at least I can protect my house, but right, you know, virtually in my own front yard, that's something different. And my, from the point of view of Prevent Cancer Now, the main thing that we want is to make pragmatic best choices. And if you have a choice between running a wire through a wall, anything that sits still, does not have to be mobile, all the sensors, all of the controls, all this kind of thing that are going to be wireless, there's no need for that. And so we're looking at huge exponential increase in a very unnecessary exposure that we know has biological effects and could be harmful.
Okay, thank you. Through the mayor, what was the motion that councillor DeBroski put forward?
His motion is that we receive the presentation, and the friendly amendment was that we invite Health Canada to present their perspective on the 5G technology.
Okay, thank you. I would like to put forward a friendly amendment as well, to consider the six proactive approaches, which is basically educating ourselves, which is bringing in Health Canada. Provide public education. I think it's up to us to let our citizens know what we might be looking at. Work with the Health Department. I think we should look into the proof of liability insurance, if we can do that through our legal department. And providing public notice and consultation about Safety Code Six, and then consider the moratorium. I don't know how long, but after all of our education and our review, to consider number six.
I think we're going to have to do two separate motions.
Okay, thank you.
Because it's very different than the first one. So why don't we call the first motion? Does everyone understand it? I don't have to repeat it. First one is that we receive the presentation, that we invite Health Canada. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved? And councillor, so councillor LaCoco's second motion, are the six, am I right, the six items that are on the screen?
Yes, the six, but for number four is consult our legal department about the liability insurance, and for the moratorium, after we get all of this information, to figure out what a moratorium looks like and for how long.
So, I'm sorry, number six, I did not understand what you said on number six.
Number six, to determine what the moratorium, is it six months, is it a year, is it two years, to determine what that moratorium would be after we've looked at all of the information.
Okay, you're in the motion, do we have a seconder for that motion? Do we have a seconder for that motion?
No.
Please, maintain decorum, please. Council can't, we ask that you maintain decorum, please. So that motion does not hit the floor.
They may just shake.
So Mr. Clegg and Ms. Sears, thank you very much for your time. I do appreciate you bringing awareness to this, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we're at your disposal.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, item 6.5 is the Winter Festival of Lights, and I know that we've got Executive Director Tina Myers here, who's going to give us an update on some interesting happenings that have been happening with the festival just recently.
Excuse me. Good evening, Mayor Jim DiOdati and members of council. I'd like to start off by thanking you for all of your ongoing support of the Ontario Power Generation's Winter Festival of Lights. I would like to thank councillor Laurie LaCoco and Wayne Campbell, along with Serge Velasetti for sitting on our board of directors. Over five years ago, we stood before you for support to revitalize the festival. With the help of the city, the stakeholders, the sponsors, volunteers, and team, we were able to bring the festival from a $24 million economic impact to a $98 million economic impact in 2018, with over 1.8 million visitors to the festival. That is over 89,000 cars and over 400 motorcoats through Duffren Islands last year. Back in 2014, we said that the goal was to bring the festival to the international level, to bring home a pinnacle award from IFEA. This year, the festival is happy to bring to the city four prestigious awards from IFEA, International Festivals and Events. Best new event, Cascades of Fire, presented by Hornblower Niagara Cruises, we received gold. Best event video promotion, we received silver. Best event promotion photograph, silver, and best event website, bronze. The professional competition draws entries from some of the world's top festivals and events. Winning entries came from many diverse organizations, such as the Dublin Irish Festival, the National Cherry Blossom Festival in Washington, and the Kentucky Derby Festival, and the Philadelphia Flower Show. International winners include event organizations from around the world. Awards were handed out in 69 different categories. Other accolades from the 2018 festival were that we had the American Bus Association's Best of Best, which was one of nine festivals recognized. We also received the People's Choice Award from Attractions Ontario. For the third year running, the festival is the top festival and event in Ontario as the People's Choice Award. In addition, the festival has been recognized at FEO Festivals and Events Ontario's Festival of Distinction, and is holding Canada's best event for the 2018 by the Tourism Industry Association of Canada. In addition, the festival is a finalist of Attraction Ontario this year's award. The other finalists are Science North and African Lion Safari. The details will come at the Taiyo Tourism Summit on October 30th. We want to thank the team, the volunteers, and all the supporters for their contributions. The festival is looking to bring even more illuminations for 2019. So we hope that you'll stay tuned for the press conference coming up on October 17th. The video that won this year, we can just play that for you real quick.
If I could present your team, we've got some little, so for Tina, Janet, Brian, Amy, and Tichana, if you want to come up here, just to the little gateway, I'd like to present you all with just a little token of our gratuity for all that you do. We know it takes a lot of dedication and a great team. And I also want to thank your chair, David, who's done an outstanding job. He's also the head of the Niagara Parks Commission. So you wear two hats, and it's nice that they come together because it's so natural. The lights are in the park, and the parks need to be involved with the lights, so it's a natural thing. So first I'll start off with, excuse me, don't mind me, Janet. So Janet, 12 years volunteer coordinator. I have a certificate for you and a little gift on behalf of all of us here. What's that? Yeah, no. Next, sorry, don't mind, I didn't orchestrate this that well. Brian, who has seven years marketing and sponsorship coordinator, he's done a terrific job. Brian, congratulations. Amy, Amy, see what we have for you, Director of Sales and Events, Amy Duffy, for doing a terrific job. And we're almost there, Tichana Jalukka, her mum's in the audience here. So I think we're gonna have to do a photo op here for that one. Same thing, now Tichana's been working as events coordinator for the Winter Festival of Lights, who's doing a terrific job too, working under the mentorship of Tina, and well done, congratulations. And last but not least, we can't leave out Vin Khunna. And of course Tina, who's done such a terrific job, I know her family's in the audience here as well. Wave guys, there's all our guys. And I know she works so hard, as a matter of fact, I remember the one year when she was pregnant with one of the guys, and she didn't skip a beat, boom, she was right back at the festival. Unbelievable, the commitment and dedication and the passion that they put in. And I just want to say on behalf of all of us here, we really appreciate what the Festival of Lights means to the city, making us year-round, what it means for tourism, and also for the locals. That's the thing I love about the Festival of Lights. It's something that's not just for tourists, but it's also for the locals. So Tina, on behalf of your city council and your residents of Niagara Falls, we present to you a certificate and a gift as well. Ryan, you get one too? There's Rick standing in your way. Got a nice picture of the back of his head, yeah, that's good. All right, that's great. So, did anybody want to say anything else?
No, just thank you for all the support. And thank you to all of our volunteers who are really the heart and soul of the festival, and we're, you know, ready for this year.
I think that was the best way to, and the kickoff this year's season is November 16th.
That's correct.
Saturday, November 16th, you want to get down in Queen Victoria Park, take in all the excitement, all the festivities, bring your family, that's a nice thing, it's a family event. And to all your volunteers, hundreds of volunteers, and all of you too. Not only do you work for the festival, but you're volunteers too, because if you got paid for all the hours that you put in, I don't think we'd afford the festival. So thanks very much, well done. Now you folks are welcome to stick around for the planning portion of this council meeting. I'd highly recommend it. If you have problems sleeping at night, hang around. We'll help you with your problem. Thank you. I now ask the city clerk to introduce the next item on tonight's agenda.
Public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city zoning bylaw to permit a 12-story, 41-meter-tall hotel at 6170 Fallsview Boulevard. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on August 30th, 2019, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passing of the zoning bylaw amendment or would like to preserve their opportunity to appeal to the local planning appeal tribunal shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets that are located outside the council chamber.
Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, I now ask our Director of Planning, Mr. Hurvich, to explain the purpose and reason for the proposed bylaw amendment.
Thank you, worship. This application is a rezoning application to permit a 12-story hotel on the property that's currently occupied by the IMAX Theater. See, apparently it don't go that way. There we are. So the property is about one hectare, about two and a half acres on the east side of Fallsview Boulevard. It's immediately north of Murray Street. To the south is the Holiday Inn and Restaurant. And to the west is a parking lot and the Wyndham Hotel. To the north is Pyramid Place. East is the Skyline Tower. And to the south is Fallsview Casino. And southeast is, or southwest rather, is the Hilton Hotel and the new theater complex that's being constructed on that site. So the site plan for this property, this is, as I said, it's a hectare in size. Proposal is for a 12-story hotel building, 230 rooms. The ground floor would be a restaurant facility. Don't know if I can use this cursor. So Fallsview Boulevard is on the left, and there is an outdoor patio area that basically engages the street, serving the restaurant on the ground floor. And then there are 11 floors of hotel rooms above that. The proposal is to seek additional height, moving from a 12, or sorry, from a, well, it is a 12-meter height requirement now to a 41-meter height requirement to the top of the hotel, and it's 46 meters to the penthouse. They're also seeking to reduce the number of loading spaces from three to two. And they're also looking to reduce the aisle width for one of the aisles in the parking lot, and that is in this southeast dogleg of the property. I'm going to come to some of the neighborhood comments in a moment, but while I have this plan on the screen, one of the objections was from the neighbors to the south, the owners of the Holiday Inn. And there's an area that's hatched, running in a horizontal band south of that hotel, which is a driveway, it's actually on the Holiday Inn property. Initially, it had been shown as providing some access to the site. In fact, the access is here on the north. So there's the driveway entrance into the property. You would enter, and all of the parking area is at the rear of the property. And there are some planting islands to break up that mass of parking that's on the site. The hotel itself will have an appearance, as you see on the screen. So the top left is the facade that would actually be facing Fallsview Boulevard. The top right is actually the side of the building that would be facing towards the Skyline Tower. And then the bottom left is the corner, if you were standing about where the little booth is, if you were to enter the parking lot for the Pyramid Place or Skyline Tower, that would be your view. And then the last view is if you were at Pyramid Place looking south. So that would be the north wall of the building. The people are still reading their phones. The zoning bylaw amendment, as I said, is the site currently occupied by the IMAX. The lands are designated tourist commercial. In the official plan, it's in an area identified for high-rise buildings. And they're requesting a tourist commercial zoning with a site-specific 12-meter height limit, and to reduce the aisle width and to reduce the number of loading spaces. Let's skip the page. So we did have a neighborhood open house in July of this year. It was attended by two adjacent landowners. They had concerns about the subject lands not having an easement over that driveway. That was the driveway area, I pointed it out earlier. They also expressed concerns about the reduced setback of the building on the south side. And they asked whether there'd be any regrading of the Fallsview Boulevard along the street area. As a result of those comments, the applicant did revise his drawings to exclude that driveway that belongs to the Holiday Inn. It was noted that the official plan does have policies that say any deviance from the setbacks in the guidelines does not impact on adjacent property owners. I'll come back to that shortly. And then it was also noted that, yes, the current slope that leads down from the IMAX Theater parking lot to the Fallsview Boulevard would be eliminated. And so while we're talking about the comments that came in, you should have received at some point today, it might have been after you were in your in-camera session, a letter from Inch Hammond, the submission by Brian Huron. It's a letter of objection from the, representing the Holiday Inn Niagara Falls Company, Payne Niagara Enterprises, a couple numbered companies, and the Yorich family. They don't object to the redevelopment of the site, but they would like the site to stick closer to the city's architectural guidelines, which I'll be speaking to shortly. But that letter should be somewhere in your package. So when planning staff was looking at this application, we had regard to the provincial policy statement as we are required to do. The Place to Grow Plan identifies Niagara Falls as being part of the economic gateway zone where they promote economic diversity and expansion of opportunities for tourism. And we believe that this hotel development does comply and meet the requirements of the province. The official plan designates these lands, as I said, as tourist commercial. The site's located in the Fallsview tourist district, where hotels up to 30 stories in height are expected. There are architectural designs, and we believe this design is generally consistent with those built form policies. And the applicant will be required to enter into a Section 37 agreement to secure streetscape improvements along Fallsview Boulevard. So we examined this project relative to the city's architectural design guidelines, both the official plan policies and the handbook. The first principle is a positive building base. We do believe that this hotel provides a positive building base. As I've noted, there's a restaurant at the ground floor. There's a patio right along the streetscape to engage the pedestrians, to create some animation along that street. In fact, 75% of the street drainage is actually engaged with buildings and activities for visitors to that area. The public realm upgrade is also a principle in the city's design guidelines. And again, we believe that the successful streetscape improvements that will be put in place along this portion of Fallsview will go a long way to improving those public realm space. The principle number three, and this is one of the areas where Mr. Huron, on behalf of his client, feels that the city is not adhering closely. So I just point that out to you. However, the staff review of this do acknowledge that there is a departure. The guidelines require a 12.5-meter setback from lot lines above the podium level. So a podium is typically, about three stories could be four, sometimes five. So if this was a typical podium of three stories, that would be about nine stories of the building that would have to be set back from the south lot line. That's a line common with the Holiday Inn. I'll just back up to maybe that, I don't know, one direction. Slides that we can take a look at, perhaps what I'm talking about. So on the north side of the building, where the driveway entrance is, there's a 17-meter setback between the building and the property line. On the south side of the building, in this location, there is a setback of 2.5 meters. On the south side of the building, in this location, there is a, a setback of 2.5 meters, which is about eight and a half feet. And so the concern is that the building is much closer to the south lot line than the guidelines would, would support. And so there is a policy in the guidelines that basically say that if the property to the south was to redevelop, it wouldn't have to make up that. What we're trying to achieve is 25 meters between hotel towers. We have achieved it successfully in some cases, and to a lesser extent in other locations. So the Holiday Inn, if it was to redevelop, would not have to provide the 25 meters. We'd be seeking the 12 and a half meters. But again, that would be part of a zoning application and would be subject to review, just as this one is occurring. Because the buildings, so the sky view principle, protecting the view of the skies, basically as you look at the sky largely from Queen Victoria Park. So we wanted to see gaps between the buildings. This building's actually 12 stories. We don't actually believe you'll be even able to see the top of this hotel from the, from Queen Victoria Park. You're quite a distance down, you know, from the top of the escarpment. Then we have the tree moraine going across there, so it's not anticipated. And so staff felt that the setback between the south property line and the building itself would not, would not be detrimental. I think the, the objector is suggesting that if the building was a little shorter, it could be set away from that line, and the building could be taller. So that's their approach to how that might have been otherwise handled. So the principle four, again, is protecting the skyline. And again, we felt that the modest height of this particular building was, was not problematic. In fact, the skyline height supports a diversity of building heights. So, you know, in the vicinity, we have the Hilton Hotel with its central building in excess of 55 stories. We have the, the Casino Hotel, which is in excess of 26 stories, and the proposed building is 12 stories. So we do feel that this is adding to the diversity of, of building heights, as well, you know, as the buildings get taller, it becomes more crucial that the building becomes slender, and that's where that 12 and a half meter setback comes from. So a 12-story building is considered a mid-rise building under the policies of the official plan. So under section, or policy 4.4.3, it speaks to mid-rise buildings of being nine to 12 stories. So it does fit that classification. As well, their principle five is to protect the views and vistas. Again, this is out of Queen Victoria Park, but there are also views that, of the Skyline Tower that should not be blocked. Again, a 12-story building is not going to impact the views of the Skyline Tower. The microclimate needs to be protected, and the applicant did submit a wind study. There are not any adverse microclimate impacts on the sidewalk of the building. There's a canopy over that outdoor patio I mentioned next to Fallsview Boulevard that will provide some mitigation, as well as some screening and vegetation plantings. And then lastly, the, how we help back? Says principle five, but it should say principles, or principle C, it should say principle seven. We're missing that for some reason. Anyway, the last one is speaking to parking, and so that should say principle seven, parking and circulation. And again, that all of the parking is contained on-site. So unlike some of our projects where there's off-site parking and there are valets taking cars to and from off-site parking, all the parking is here, so there will not be an impact on the traffic circulation. And as well, the parking lot itself is broken up with a number of landscaped islands. So in summary, the staff are in support of this application. We find that the lands are designated for tourist commercial in the official plan. They are in a location where high-rise buildings are anticipated to locate. The request for site-specific regulations is appropriate to guide future development. The design proposed hotel is consistent with the intent of the design guidelines for development that is greater than four stories. Amending bylaw would incorporate a mechanical penthouse as an architectural feature, and the development is subject to Section 37 agreement to secure the landscaping. So staff is recommending the council support the zoning amendment application for site-specific tourist commercial zone to permit a 12-story, 41-meter hotel, and the passage of the amending zoning ballot is conditional on the execution of a Section 37 agreement. Those are the highlights of the application.
Thank you, Mr. Hurlivich. Do we have any questions of council for Mr. Hurlivich? Counselor LaCoco.
To the mayor, to Mr. Hurlivich, how can we be guaranteed if the Holiday Inn comes back at another time to develop, that they will be given that leeway of not providing the 25 meters? How can that be guaranteed?
Well, the guidelines don't require 25 meters. They require 12.5 meters. So they would have to come in with a specific ask. So, so they, they're only required to provide 12 and a half meters, so not 25. I know the letter says there would be asked to provide 25. Then we're going to rely on the policy that I cited from the official plan that says that any future development would not be penalized by an undersized side yard of an adjacent developed property. So we would use those guidelines. We're going to come to the same public meeting as this, and council's going to debate that and determine whether a side yard of 12 and a half meters is, is necessary or something less.
On that same note, Mr. Hurlivich, so just so I had that clear, I had questions on the same thing. So on the south property line, I know it said a 25-meter separation. I'm assuming, do they assume that's 12 and a half meters on each side as an average? Is that where they?
That's correct. So each, if each property provided a 12 and a half meters. So on the north side, they definitely achieved that. They have 17 meters, so they have five meters in excess. So if the property Pyramid Place to the north, if they were to tear that red brick building down and redevelop that, and that building provided 12 and a half meters, we would have the 25 meters between towers. So each property contributes its share, but it is true that on the south side, the property does not have that 12 and a half meter setback.
And what is the setback on the south line?
It's 2.5 meters, I think it was. 2.5 meters, that's eight and a half feet.
So I guess my only question is, similar to what Counselor LaCoco's saying, so if the development takes place on the south side, what would we expect? The same two and a half meters, or are we going to try to make up the 25 meters?
I don't anticipate anything. It's what they bring in, you're going to decide whether or not it's appropriate.
Okay. So it's more, it's a suggestion, not a requirement?
It's a guideline.
It's a guideline. And then my last question in the same regard is, can this building not be moved north some meters, or is that, is there physical constraints why that couldn't happen?
Well, they can't move it north because the driveway is there. It's a two, two-lane driveway in and out, and there's a bit of a dip for the port cochere, whether you drive in and you drop your car off or your luggage off while you're registered at the hotel. So basically, that space is needed at minimum for the driveway entering the property.
Thank you. Any other questions of council for Mr. Hurlivich? Counselor Carrion.
Just a quick question to Mr. Hurlivich. What did we approve for Jolly Cut? How high is Jolly Cut proposed development?
That's the former Moretta property?
I think so, yeah. Yeah. Was it 20?
Oh, okay, I know what you're talking about. Where the fall, the old, anyway, Niagara Falls Club used to be. Anyway, there are three towers proposed on that site by the DCN. I believe it's 20, 20 meters, 21 meters, I think, between towers.
No, no, the height, what was the height that we approved?
Oh, those were far in excess of this.
38.
Right? But that's not the Jolly Cut. That's not the Jolly Cut.
I think Counselor Thompson is correct.
And what about the Jolly Cut one?
38.
38 stories?
No. There's two 38 and one 56 further away, but that's not the Jolly Cut.
Not the Jolly Cut one. On the end of Robinson Street.
Yeah, that, that one's 20 stories or something like that.
20 stories? Okay. I thought it was a very broadest proposal for the size of this property. It could be 20 or 25 stories, and I, we'd still be looking at supporting it.
Members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting will result in the local planning appeal tribunal dismissing any referral it receives. Failure to sign the sign-in sheets will result in staff rejecting an appeal as per Section 3419 of the Planning Act. Council will now hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Is there anyone here other than the applicant who wishes to address council? Okay, seeing none? Council will now hear from the applicant or his or her representative.
Good evening. My name, my name's Lynn Sopless. I'm the architect representing the project. Basically, we've, we've spent a fair amount of time pushing and pulling this project around with the planning department and the various, various authorities, and we agree with everything that's been put forward by the planning department. We feel that it's a modest development, given the size of the lot and so forth. We have, we have 180 parking spaces when we only need 140 in respect to the bylaw, so there is no parking variance required. The variance for the, for the loading spaces is due to the fact that it's a hotel, and the bylaw doesn't, doesn't differentiate between the hotels. And this hotel, which is a limited service product, will not be generating the kind of garbage or requiring the kind of receiving and this receiving or, or transportation of trucking or anything like that to that effect. So the two, two loading spaces, we feel is quite adequate, and your staff concur with that. With respect to the separation of the, of the southern property line, the building only faces east and west, so the southern property line has no windows and no overview on anything that would be built on the Holiday Inn side. We felt that, given the, the placement of the product and giving the monolithic shape, we could go up four stories, as, as Director said, and, and then cut the building back another six meters, which would add height to the building to receive the, the room count that is required for the, for the density on the, on the hotel. But that would defeat the purpose of, of the architecture of the project, which creates a really nice, nice, non-imposing hotel in the, in the area, given the fact that you have higher and more, more definitive type buildings in and around the Skyline Tower. So with, with the architectural design that we went through and the, the various meetings that we went through with the Parks Commission and, and, and our wind studies and our shadow studies and so forth, we believe that this, this project would be a welcome addition to the hotel landscape in the Skyline Tower area, and we thoroughly support the findings of the report.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for the architect? Okay, we're good. Thank you very much. The public meeting with respect to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded. What's the will of council? Counselor Thompson making the move in the recommendation?
Yeah, I'm sorry that, when was this objection?
Can you put your mic on, your microphone on, counsel?
When was this objection sent in? I didn't see it.
Yeah, we just got the letter today. We just received it today.
Did council get it?
Yeah, I, it's sitting on my desk, and your handouts should be there. Yeah, it's a little unfortunate they do it the last minute, I know.
Anyway, it looks like there's been a lot of negotiation back and forth. I'm sure when something comes in for the Skyline property, we'll be as receptive to make it all happen. I like the look of the hotel, and it's certainly going to be an improvement from the old IMAX Theatre there. So I would move the motion.
Okay, moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Carrion. If there's no further discussion, we'll call the vote. All those in favor, okay? And that's approved. Thank you very much. Moving on to item 8.1, John Allen Park.
Move the tennis and basketball court.
Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Strange, that we move the three recommendations for the tennis and basketball court development for John Allen Park. We'll call the vote. All those in favor, and that's approved. Thank you for that. Item 8.2.
I'd move it to your.
8.2 and 8.3.
Yes, I'll second that.
Moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo, that we move the two-year waiting period for minor variances on 4552 Portage Road. We'll call the vote. All those in favor? That's approved. Thank you. Yes, now item 8.3. You making that motion?
Same one.
Okay, motion by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Strange, that we exempt the two-year waiting period on minor variance for 8196 MacLeod Road as well for their seven dwelling units. All those in favor? And that's approved as well. Thank you. Item 8.4, relocation of the Niagara Falls Farmers Market. Moved by Counselor Strange, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo, that we have a recommendation that we temporarily move the Niagara Falls Farmers Market to the McBain Community Centre. All those in favor? And that is approved. Thank you. Item 8.5, report in regard to Government of Ontario decision regarding the dedicated gas tax. We have a recommendation before us.
I move the proposal objective to this.
Mr. Drenn, did you want to comment on this report?
Yes, I did. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'd just like to take a couple minutes just to talk about dedicated funding for public transit. Ontario communities, both urban and rural, rely on public transit as do we, where we've seen an increase by over 50% in our ridership over the last five years. You need transit to get to work, get to medical appointments, buy groceries, participate in social events with family and friends. While many Ontarians rely on transit as their only mode of transportation, many more choose it. And specialized transit makes it possible for seniors to remain independent in their home and active in the community. That being said, the four governments' gas tax review will determine the future of dedicated funding for transit. Some municipalities have been vocal advocating for changes to the existing gas tax program that would eliminate conditionality for transit and flexibility for operating. Please help OPTA, which is the Ontario Public Transit Association, our voice in transit, not only ours, the 109 other transit operations in Ontario, get the message to Minister Mulroney that Ontario needs dedicated public transit fund. And I've supplied a postcard. It's under the, under your name card in front of you, in which they're asking us, and this is OPTA, is asking us to fill in with your name, your title, being councillor or mayor, and, and then signing it. And if you can then leave them on the table in front of you, the clerk will collect them and mail the postcard out to Minister, Transportation Minister Mulroney, saying that we want gas tax to remain for, for transit.
Thank you for that, Mr. Drenn. Any questions for Mr. Drenn on the resolution? Counselor Peter Angelo.
Yeah, your worship. I just want to say that I, I, I think dedicated gas tax is a great investment in transit systems, and we need to support it and let the Government of Ontario know that it needs to stay. So I'd be happy to make the motion.
Okay. Motion by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Strange, that we support the recommendation supporting the gas tax being in place. All those in favor? And that's approved. Thank you for that. Moving on to resolutions, we at 9.1 and 9.2, we've already passed the reports, so we've got the two resolutions supporting the two-year waiting period being waived. Moved by Counselor Dubrowski, seconded by Counselor Thompson. All those in favor? That's approved. Thank you. The consent agenda, what's the desire of council on the consent agenda?
I would move the consent agenda, your worship.
Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Dubrowski, that we move the consent agenda. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved. And just real quickly, we're waiving the fees for St. Paul having their Halak Queen event. We're moving the receivables and accounts, the water meter replacement update. We are... We are supporting the proposed revision of the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee Terms of Reference, parking changes, intersection control for Jepson Street and for Stanley Avenue and Vine Street. So now on to communications and comments to the city clerk. Item eleven point one, updated budget added. Request for consideration for project share. Is somebody...
They're looking for twenty thousand dollars additional?
Well, maybe we can get... Who wants to speak? Who's going to speak to this? Counsel LaCoco?
Through the mayor. Project Share put their budget together, and there's a shortfall for a manager. Last time for the shelter, there was no manager. The executive director of Project Share was managing it, and it just became too difficult for her to do her own job, take care of the Project Share goals and responsibilities, and manage the shelter. So when they put the budget together, there was a forty thousand dollar shortfall. So she is going to another organization to get that. It's not confirmed yet, so I won't speak to that, but she is approaching the city for twenty thousand.
And Counsel LaCoco, of course, is one of our board members at Project Share, that she can bring this information to us. Counsel Debrowski, did you have a question or comment or no? Okay. Oh, did you make the motion?
I thought I made that.
Well, I wasn't sure you asked the question.
Oh, I said, do you want twenty thousand? I'll support it.
Okay. All right.
Read the report.
Geez, you give him a present one minute, the next Monday he's all over you. Okay, motion by Counselor Thompson. Yeah, seconded by Counsel Debrowski. Is there any other questions or comments on the motion? All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved. Thank you.
Should have been a bigger building. Should have named a bigger building after.
Item eleven point two, we've got various correspondence from the region, suggestion that we receive the correspondence from the region. Moved by Counsel Thompson, seconded by Counsel LaCoco. Or did you want to comment? Counsel LaCoco?
I just wanted to comment on the second one, the grants. It was really nice to see that they're putting together incentive programs for affordable rental housing, brownfield archaeological remediation, employment growth in key sectors, equality of life in public realm. So I was excited to see that, because I know we've been talking about affordable housing, incentives, and towards developers.
Thank you for that. So you're seconding that as well?
Yes.
Okay, great. All those in favor? And that's approved. Thank you. Eleven point three, the Niagara Region twenty-twenty meeting schedule, received by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Strange. All those in favor? That's approved. Eleven point four, the Greater Niagara Circle Road Committee.
I'd recommend Counsel Peter Angelo.
Motion by Counsel Strange that we recommend Counsel Peter Angelo be on the committee? So counsel, the Greater Niagara Circle Road Committee of the region is looking for a representative to sit on that. I did sit on it at one time many years ago, I think about fifteen years ago, and they are looking for a rep to join them to help build their trail. By the way, that not just around the region, but it is coming toward the city now. They've gone around the region, along the Great Lakes, along the canal, and they are looking to come through the city as well. So Counselor Strange, are you suggesting you will sit on that?
I was recommending that.
Yes, Counsel Peter Angelo?
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. If we don't have a member of council, I know we're all on multiple committees, maybe we can ask, you know, for volunteers, or we can send it out to the Recreation Commission and Parks in the City Commission, because I do believe that the bike committee that we used to have became part of the Park in the City afterwards. So I'm sure that there's someone out there, Your Worship, that would like to be a representative on it. There's also the Amici Viking Club that operates out of Fireman's Park right now, and I know that obviously they're big into cycling. They have a number of rides every single week. So I'm sure that we can find someone out there.
Okay, so maybe a motion that we reach out to committees of counsel to see if we can...
Put it on our website, Your Worship.
And put it on our website to see what interest that we can garner from our community.
None of them will do it, then I'll do it. I have to vary.
All right. So motion by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Debrowski, that we reach out to volunteers through our committees of counsel to see if we can have reps sit on the Greater Niagara Circle track. And if not, Counsel Strange will step in and do it. He's begging the community, please, step up and volunteer.
Nobody wants to be MPP.
We'll call the vote. All those in favor? And that's approved. Thank you. Item eleven point five, resolution from the City of Kitchener regarding single-use disposable wipes. They're suggesting that the flushable name is removed from the packaging. So what's the will of counsel? Do you want to weigh into this discussion, or do you want to receive this?
Receive and file.
Motion by Counsel Carrio, seconded by Counsel Strange, that we receive and file the resolution from Kitchener. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved. Thank you. Eleven point six, looks like Municipality of Chatham Kent also getting in on the resolution bandwagon here in regard to legal aid funding.
Second resolution to support the...
Okay, motion by Counsel Thompson, seconded by Counsel Debrowski, that we support the Chatham Kent Legal Aid Funding Resolution to Support Legal Aid. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved. Thank you. Item eleven point seven, proclamation request for fire prevention week October sixth through the twelfth.
So move.
Moved by Counsel Carrio, seconded by Counsel Debrowski. All those in favor? And that's approved unanimously. Item eleven point eight, proclamation request waste reduction week October twenty-first through twenty-seventh. Moved by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Carrio. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved. Eleven point nine, another proclamation request, National Disability Employment Awareness Month for the month of October. Moved by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel LaCoco. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved. Item eleven ten, proclamation request, British Home Children one-hundred-and-fiftieth Anniversary, requesting the city declare Saturday, September twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen, so it's a little bit behind us, British Home Children Anniversary Day. Moved by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Strange. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved. Eleven eleven, proclamation request, World Bullying Prevention Awareness Day, October the seventh. Moved by Counsel Carrio, seconded by Counsel Strange. All those in favor? And that's approved. Eleven point twelve, the Matthew Daniele Memorial Fundraiser. They give us the information, their event takes place Saturday, November the second, where they raise funds for community events. Tickets are sixty dollars per person. Do we want to make a motion to open it up to councillors that would like to attend and purchase a ticket? Moved by Counsel Carrio, seconded by Counsel Debrowski, that the request be circulated to council for those that would like to attend and purchase a ticket, and we can also send a gift for their auction table as well. All those in favor? And that's approved. Item eleven point one three, Lake Ontario Water Levels. There's correspondence from various levels in regard to, I guess the frustration is if you have a community along Lake Ontario with raising lake levels, you're not allowed to put up walls. These communities are petitioning the International Joint Commission and the provincial and federal governments to allow them to put up protective barriers to keep the walls from flooding in their communities. So they're looking for high-water level support with these levels.
I would support them to.
Moved by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Carrio. All those in favor? And that's approved. Item eleven fourteen, Portage Road Resident Petitions. Portage Road resident seeking assistance from council to intervene in an effort to stop or control the noise and speed issues at the corner of Throwstone Road and Portage Road. Motion by Counsel Carrio, seconded by Counsel Debrowski, that we refer this to staff to come back to council. Yes, Counsel Peter Angelo?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, I hope everyone saw that in our handouts as well, there's quite a lengthy petition from a number of pages of residents, Your Worship. So obviously, it's bothering a lot of people. I don't know what staff can do. I think it might be more something that has to do with the NRP. So I was going to ask whether or not part of the motion could be that our staff contact the NRP and see what can be done.
NRP and the region, right?
And the region.
Regional road, yeah. So the mover and the second are okay with that amendment? Okay. Thank you for that addition, Counsel. We'll call the vote. All those in favor? And that's approved. Thank you. Item eleven fifteen, Niagara Falls Public Library Interlibrary Loan Boring Support. Motion by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Strange, that we receive the recommendation. All those in favor? Okay, that's approved. Item eleven sixteen, special occasion permits for the Great Canadian Caesar Fest taking place in Niagara Falls, November second, at the Scotiabank Convention Centre. And for those of you wondering, and of course, they want this to be declared an event of municipal significance for their liquor license. This is not Caesar salads. This is for Caesars made with Clamato. So motion by Counsel... In where?
In Canada.
Was it? Clamato juice was invented in Canada. Well, look at that. Hey, look at that.
Who wouldn't know that?
Who would know that other than Mike? That's a motion by Counsel Thompson, who enjoys a good Caesar, seconded by Counsel Debrowski. And of course, our CAO finally weighs in. Who wouldn't know that? All those in favor? I might have known it, and I couldn't remember it. But I love a good Caesar. Good spicy Caesar. Eleven point one seven, noise bylaw exemption proposal for St. James. As you may recall, we already presented them with one noise bylaw exemption, and they are here asking for a second one. That's corner of Throwstone Road and St. James for the construction of the Wendy's Restaurant. Counsel Peter Angelo?
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. I don't think I'm going to support the request, to be honest with you. I think that they can make do during other hours. Couple of things I was surprised at. One was, you know, there was no notification to the residents in the sense that I guess in hindsight, it would have been better off to, you know, go around, knock on their doors, and just let them know that this is going to happen. I don't believe that that was done. Second of all, the lights were pretty bright, Your Worship. I think if the work gets done during the daytime, it might be a bit of an interruption in terms of traffic, but at least people will be able to sleep in their homes at night. So I would support not approving it.
Okay, so, okay. So we've got a motion for denial by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Thompson. Anyone want to speak up? The clerk would like to comment.
I just want to point out to counsel, we did receive a later email from the requister just stating that they do intend to use lower-intensity lights this time. They will not require a generator-powered high-capacity pump. They will not require a vacuum truck, and they will not need to saw-cut the asphalt. So they just wanted to point that out in their request.
Okay, so we'll go... Yep, Counsel Debrowski?
Well, just to the... It sounds like it makes even more sense to kind of do the, complete the project throughout the day. Yeah, I've had a number of emails and phone calls as well, and they already deal with a lot of thoroughway traffic throughout the day, but yeah, to get a good night's sleep, I think would make the members of that area quite happy.
All right. We'll call that vote then. All those in... Hold on, the clerk's got another comment.
I'm not here to defend the requister. I just know that in speaking with representatives, they were instructed to get this exemption to the noise bylaw to do the work in the evening, because the region is telling them not to do it during the day. So just so you see both sides of the coin there.
All right. So is there any other comments before we call the motion?
Tell the region to stay out of...
All those in favor? Okay, and it is not approved. Ratification of in-camera, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, just pointing out that again, there was a resolution to go in camera prior to tonight's council meeting, and that council directs staff to proceed with an offer to purchase land within the Montrose Business Park.
Move the in-camera.
Motion by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel LaCoco, that we move the in-camera portion of the meeting. All those in favor? And that's approved. Bylaws?
The bylaws, the first, second, and third motion?
Motion by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Debrowski, that the bylaws be given a first, second, and third reading. All those in favor? And that's approved. New business. Who wants to start with new business? Counselor Peter Angelo?
Am I the only one, Your Worship?
Well, you're always good for a few new business.
Wow, okay.
Like tackle the New Bern Bridge or the Ford Drive?
Ah, no, no, no. You know what, Your Worship? I do want to talk about bike lanes. I know I mentioned it to you previously. So right now, I guess our service standard would be that after the wintertime, we send out the street sweepers, and we sweep the sides of the road, including the bike lanes. I guess we all know that over months, any debris that comes on the road, because the vehicles travel there, it all ends up on the side of the road. I was contacted earlier this week, or sorry, earlier last week, by the Amici Club, in specific, just along Mountain Road, because they operate now out of Fireman's Park. And I guess the issue would be that there's so much debris that collects on the bike lanes over the months from the spring all the way to the fall, and then right through the winter. And we only service the bike lanes by, through street sweeping once a year. So I guess my question through you to staff would be, what would it take to increase the service standards of how often we street sweep roads that have specifically bike lanes? And I'm not asking for all roads to be swept more than once, but those that have bike lanes, it does make sense, especially the ones where you get road bikes that travel on those roads. The road bikes are the ones that have the very thin tires, and even the smallest of stones can set you off. And I know that the people that ride in those cycling clubs, they're going quite fast on a bike. You know, some of them can average anywhere from thirty to thirty-five kilometers an hour. So the slightest little bit of debris can really set them off. So it would be interesting to know what type of service standard we could implement so that we don't only do it once in the spring and then wait until, you know, a whole year passes before we do it again. So just a question through you to staff, Your Worship.
Yep, so Mr. Nichol?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. Just specifically for Mountain Road and most of the roads that contain bike lanes are in fact regional roads. So we'd be happy to forward that same request to our partners at the region. For the roads that the city does own, we do do the spring cleanup, but it really ends there. So we are out actively doing road patrols on a regular basis, and I would say if there's anything specific, a problem area that we find, we clean it up. But we don't have a program right now for, say, a summertime cleanup. I'd certainly be happy to look into, first of all, which roads we have bike lanes on and what a program like that would look like and cost, and I could report back to council with some of those details.
Yeah, that would be great, Your Worship. And then maybe at that time, if we do increase the service standard, we could pass it on to the region. I know, as Mr. Nichol pointed out, that most of the major roads that have bike lanes are regional roads. We do have some in the city as well, in specific, like Keeler Road, parts of McLeod Road, I think Morrison Road or Chester Road. I believe that some of that falls under our jurisdiction as well. So I'd be interested to see the report when it comes back.
You want to make that a motion, Counsel?
Absolutely.
So moved by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Debrowski, that we ask staff to report back on street sweeping supplementary service on bike lane roads. All those in favor? Okay, that's approved. Thank you. You're still up.
Yeah, my second item, Your Worship, was just maybe through you to Transportation, to Mr. Drenn. I just had a question in regards to, I know we're doing a large traffic survey, I guess, out in the McLeod area in between Keeler and Gartner. And one of the residents showed me the information that they got from the city, and what it had said there, I thought, was that non-respondents would be considered a no vote. And I just wonder if that's the way that we categorize it, or when people respond, like, because we're asking them a question of whether or not they're in favor of, I believe it's speed bumps along St. Michael Avenue. So I believe the letter said that non-respondents would be considered as a no. And I just wanted to know whether or not we break it down in terms of yes, no, and then did not respond, or whether we lump the no's with the did not respond. I guess my preference would be to separate them all and then just kind of analyze the data in terms of the yes and the no, and the legal did not respond. That would be my preference, and I don't know whether or not staff agrees.
Mr. Drenn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think what we could do is bring back a report, because we do have a policy related to speed hunts. And what you're trying to do is capture the majority of people who want it, because the expense we go through, we don't want to, at the end of the day, have a small group say, "We want it," but the rest of the street maybe are apathetic at the time, and then we want it, but the rest of the street maybe are apathetic at the time, and then suddenly they realize the saying, hang on a second, we're getting this thing. And I really want council to understand the policy as to how we do it.
So, sorry, what is the policy?
So he's asking, is a no, no answer, registered as a no? That's what he's asking? If somebody does not, is that right? Is that what you're asking? If someone does not fill out the survey?
Yeah, if they don't respond, it's considered as part of the makeup of the 50%. So in other words, if you get, we don't break it down and say, okay, we got nos and yeses, and there was five of those, and, you know, four of those, and there was 30 that didn't respond, we weight it towards saying, well, there's really nothing we're going to do here, because it's unfair to the entire street at that point, for five people making a decision on the entire street. So that's why I'd like to bring back our policy and explain what we actually go through. It's numbers, so there has to be a set of numbers that we hit to take it to the next step. So if we, when we go through that, and we determine that there hasn't been enough response, then we end the process.
So our policy then is that, and sorry, Your Worship, through you, I guess, to Mr. Drenn, our policy then is that there has to be more than 50% of the respondents that would vote yes?
There has to be more than 50% of response to it, and then we evaluate on that basis.
Just 50% more, sorry, of response? So it could be yes or no?
Correct.
And then we evaluate?
And then we evaluate.
And then whatever side is greater, we take?
Yes.
Okay.
Then we bring a report back to council and say, here's what it is, and we invite the residents here to speak on it if they choose to.
Okay. I guess my only concern was, I think the speed bumps that are proposed are along St. Michael Avenue. I know Parkside has them as well. And as well, I think that the request was made to add another one on the north side of Parkside, from the Hydrofield, but that all streets, like all the side streets as well, are in this survey. So it's a very large survey. Living on one of the side streets, I might not respond because it doesn't really directly affect me. It might be something I have to drive over every day, but again, I might be very apathetic, and I might not respond. Therefore, I was hoping it would only be the people that were directly affected, that those that are on those roads, that we would really take into consideration. So I guess I'll wait for the responses to come back and hope that they're detailed enough that we can kind of analyze the data.
Yes. With regards to the people who carry the most weight are the people that live right in front of that area where there is a speeding problem. They carry the most weight.
Okay. Thank you, Your Worship.
We look forward to that report. Any other new business, councillor? Do you have any other new business of council?
I don't have any. I just looked at the agenda, and it said the Mayor's Youth Committee was formed in 1999. I introduced the Mayor's Youth Committee, I think, in 1980, and after, and I remember when I tried to do that, because I was talking to young people during the campaign, and they said, we should have some say in. And I said, we'll form a committee. And I did. And I got a reaction from the principals and saying, oh, this is all political, this is not. But we formed it, and then after I was out of office for a while, it didn't, it fell apart, but it came back on later on. But it started in the early 80s.
We were going to name it the Wayne Thompson Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee. There's too many letters.
Does he know he can only get one bill reviewed?
Matter of fact, speaking of our Mayor's Youth Advisory, we had our meeting right here in Chambers Saturday morning, at 9:00 AM. We had the whole group in here, they were all day, from 9 till 4, whole group of students, really dedicated. They sat in all your chairs, a real good group representing all the schools in the city. Really great. I did have one question on our new business for Ms. Mouldenhauer in regard to trails. So I know that our, we're anxiously awaiting the reopening of Paisley-January Pool Trail between Thorold Stone Road and Morrison, and we're just wanting to get an update. How's the region making of? Would that be Eric Nichol, our Director of Municipal Works, that can answer that question? Well, look how quick you were to redirect that question. That was great. Well done. So, Mr. Nichol, do you have any updates for us on our trail status with the region?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. At the present time, the region's advising the end of October would be the likely date for their sewer rehab work to wrap up, and after that date, it would be turned back over to us to resume use as a trail. I would suggest that we will plan a few extra weeks in contingency to that date, as I do believe they're encountering some issues with their sewer work. So it would be most likely mid-November, in my opinion. The earliest it might be would be end of October to have that trail reopened.
And can I ask you, do they hand it back to us the way they got it, paved and grassed?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, they would be handing it back in a sort of matching existing conditions. We would want to do a review of it before it's open to the public, however, to make sure that it's in great shape. And then there are plans for future work on the other section, just south of the section that's closed now, that we can get moving on and start construction next year to continue those additional pieces of the trail.
That's great, because I've received a lot of people asking that, so many people, thousands, use those trails, and they're really disappointed right now that they can't access it. So that's good. So we're anticipating end of October, and hopefully sometime in November, we'll have it up and running again. All right, good. Everybody you watch, call Mr. Nichol if you have any problems with that trail. All right, motion for adjournment. Motion by councillor Dubrowski, seconded by councillor LaCoco. All those in favor? And we are adjourned. See you soon, folks. Have a great Thanksgiving.